May I call Raymond Cawson, leading District of Chappell to order, to go over his speaker committees?
As we gather today on the traditional territory of the Treaty Nations to conduct the business of the District of Chappell, we do so knowing that we are privileged to serve the citizens of this community, and we shall endeavor to conduct a business in their best interest. Thank you.
Parting to adoption of the agenda is merely to discuss the council. Councilor McDaniel?
The Ferber's Park in the dirt pile box.
I'm sorry, the Ferber's Park in the which?
Dirt pile box.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions, any additions, any answers? Not seen any, except the adoption of the agenda. So, okay. Minutes of the regular council meeting held on July 7th. We've got two sets here. Did we do the 27th and were we going to do the 7th one again, or did we do the last meeting?
No, we had to amend. There was an error in July 7th, so it's been amended, so looking to be adopted again.
Okay.
That is amended.
Okay, minutes of the regular council meeting held on July 7th, 2025, as amended.
Motion, second.
Okay, any discussion? I'd be curious, and what was amended, Jeff?
We'd actually had a question, as, a question is being put down from Lacy Archer, when it was in reality from Andrea Smith. So it was just an error in the court documents. We apologize for that. We didn't try to do that.
Yeah, okay, fair. Okay, thank you. Okay, all in the paper. Minutes of regular meeting held on July 21st, 2025.
On Tuesday.
Second.
Any discussion? Uh, something? No allegations about us, to us, committee reports, uh, mayor's report. On the 21th, I attended the grand opening of the Northern, Northern Nations Wellness Center at 15th and 16th, 15th Avenue in Chappell. It was very enjoyable, they served us food, and the Soviet dancers performed. This, if you're not familiar, is located down right beside the beginning and the dollar store. I gave a welcome speech to recognize what a vital part of healthcare to our community of this size and population. Chappell is very, uh, this meeting is very much to meet the sentiment of Chappell. I would like to say my thanks to the Soviet Forest Nations for leading this great initiative. Captain Russell, ten on, that's, thank you. And I went on to meet with the Forest Minister at the Soviet Forest Station's Cultural Center. We had asked for a meeting with the Forest Minister in our community, but he didn't get up, he didn't come here, but he was closed, so he invited us up to, to attend the meeting with Councilor McDonald and myself being part of that meeting. At this meeting, we made a point that this sommel, the West Fraser sommel, is our only existing sommel in the area. We were asking for fiber for this sommel, so that it can continue to operate at capacity. Right now, I believe the West Fraser mill is only operating at half capacity. But the point, the point that we made for fiber in our community was, campers' operation had shut down in Port Saint John in the past years, so we, we said, where is that fiber? We were asking where the fiber's flowing, because they have a TFL, and that's a tree farm license. I also said that the NDP government has the power to change the laws, and should do so when the company is no longer doing its part to manufacturing fiber in our region. Being a vital part of the natural resource that contributes to the BC economy, Forest Street is a big part of BC's history. The other point that I've discussed was the housing and the work that is needed here in Canada and in other countries around the world. Without that jobs, smaller communities like Chappell and others cannot support the infrastructure to continue to improve lives for the community members and the capture of the areas surrounding Chappell. I was glad that Minister Raymond Palmer was able to meet with us and to look at our area. So we flew over courtesy of West Fraser around the area, checking out all the fiber in our area. So we got a first-hand look at what we have to offer. And just a side note, Palmer commented value-added. Without a sommel, I told him, you, we don't have the value-added. Value-added meaning that we're taking product from the sommel and making it a viable product. So we know sommels that have breakdowns, wood in there, like two-by-fours, two-by-sixes, two-by-fives, by-twos. So, you know, we, we have to be able to understand the value-added, we need to continue to operate a sommel. So this was part of our talks there, and in our other issues, he asked us a question, he says, what else is bothering Chappell with the community? And it's always down there, because they do sit in the meeting rooms with other ministers. So we talked about the healthcare, housing, and the opioid crisis. So he was very interested. So he showed some, some to help him, and taken some of our concerns back to, to the legislature in Victoria, so I was very happy that they're back. And on the meeting on August 2nd, I attended the co-panning meeting of celebrity banquet Saturday. So he was very interested to go to another community. We hold our chainsaw carnings, they hold their co-panning in Taylor DC. So it was very interesting to see other communities producing something like what we have there in downtown as the chainsaw harvest. So with that, you done it? Is there any other names on the reports? Okay, so we will continue, we have, like, today, motion to accept the reports, or looking at the motions. Councilor McDaniel?
Did you guys pull any of the duckets out of the Peace River?
Uh, we were, they cut barrels to half, and then they put, full water in there, they give you a, a gold pan full of dirt, and then they put what they had in them, and it was brass, piece that they didn't look for, something that would save to the body. So that was it. No more, no more, please. So anyway, to continue, I need the acceptance of the report.
Okay.
Any comments there? Okay. Especially, I go, post-honors, email from the Union of PC Municipalities, being the July 22nd, 2025, read EBC's small type form.
Motion received.
Second.
Any discussion? All in the paper? Okay. I want I-6, is there any? Counselor wants to call? Sure, call I-6, please. Okay. I-6. Any others? Okay, they accept I-1, I-5?
Motion to accept I-1, I-5. Second.
All in the paper? Okay, Counselor, Counselor I-6?
So I-6 is a report from North Central Football Government Association, and I just think it's, they're speaking, what mostly, what they said to me, they're speaking about the, our previous conference in Prince Rupert, and they do show a pretty great picture of our contribution, that beautiful carving that we hand-delivered to them, and they're kind of creating that really great relationship between our two communities. But what's really most important, I think, with this regional association, is that they're speaking about the luncheon at EBCM, and I think that those of us that will be attending, that I just want to make it, point out how important it is that we do attend that luncheon, and we do vote for representatives from the northern region to represent on the provincial level down in EBCM, because the more people that, the more of us that attend the luncheon, the more of us that vote for the northern people who are representing us in the province wide stance, I just think that's very important, so we're determined to attend that. Thank you.
Any discussion on it? Any questions? Motion to accept I-6?
Motion to accept I-6, second.
All in the paper? Okay. Illegal structure 5391 at 45A Street.
I'll make a motion that council authorize administration to file a notice with the land title office against the property located at 5319, 45th A Street, at NBC, PID 030234522, lot 2, district lot 1809, Peace River District, line EPP 72983, for an illegal structure contrary to the district's building file.
Any discussion?
Yeah.
Counselor Smith, you know that?
I just have a question. Based on the pictures, and I didn't mention this last time this came up, but what deems it a, it's hard to tell from this picture, but it just kind of looks like it's sitting there. What deems a structure permanent or non-permanent, and then sizing-wise, if it's just like a shed? It's kind of hard to tell from this photo.
We asked our building inspector Devon to come in and explain this at depth, because he's a kind of our resident expert, so I will throw it over to him.
If you just hit the button there, you'll get it. Okay, so the building bylaw allows structures of 100 square feet or less to be built without permits. There is permits available for temporary buildings, which is either three or six months, or up to a year or two years, I'd be a temporary building. As far as the construction of, people believe that coveralls are temporary, because they can easily be removed. You can build on skids and still be a permanent structure. Regardless, a permit should have been applied for, because the district is not liable if there must be a collapse in the building, because it's not built to BC building code. So temporary and permanent, there's not necessarily a fine line of the difference, but depending on permitting.
Okay.
So anything over 100 square feet requires a permit, and the building bylaw states that it must meet the building code requirements for the District of Chappell.
Thank you. Counselor Dent, and also?
So with the 57, section 57, what, does that, was that still leave the district liable for anything?
No, we've put a notice on title, so any future purchases of the property, if they do a title search, a title comes up saying that there's an illegal structure on the property. So you may or may not be able to buy or sell the property, depending on the mannequin, but it's just a notice for potential buyers that there could be issues with that property.
So, and so would this fall under the same type of, section 57, is that the same thing as C-CAN that's on a property?
I don't believe we put a section 57 on a C-CAN, but you may have gotten a temporary permit for stories of with the C-CAN, but.
Actually, no, we, we did a workaround, a C-CAN, several years ago, across the highway there, and I was wondering what that workaround is, as opposed to something for a shop or shed or garage.
That actually precludes me, I'm not sure what we're referring to, like, when you're in, I can look it up, and then you can come for the next one.
Yes, so, I, I think it's one of six, a one and a half, doesn't know the other way I looked at it, with the C-CANS or not, we have them on the residential property, like they're plunked all over the place on, on commercial properties with, people with, some with permission and some without permission, and maybe, maybe we have to look at the bottom law.
Has there, does it water?
So like, as to the tarp sheds, many are with 100 square feet, are those people required to get a building, kind of, or temporary kind of some sort, in order to rent those on the property?
Your building bylaw from district exempts any tarplane type structures, along with greenhouse, you're not required permits.
Okay, bear with me, I mean, till all these things, but, so if a tar or greenhouse is bigger than 100 square feet, they can either ask for a temporary permit or they're not required to have one, but does that mean that Chappell, the district is responsible or liable if somebody gets hurt?
We wouldn't permit a structure that the bylaw says does not require, because then we would be taken liable, liability for that.
So we accept responsibility for things that don't, that are, don't leave us liable? Is that right?
We're liable.
Can you just say that again?
We would not permit a structure that is exempt from the building bylaw, because then we would be taking a liability if we put a permit on the tarplane structures or the greenhouses.
Okay.
So not knowing that this structure was built to do, as far as, I mean, I doubt throughout the building bylaw, we cannot bypass and say, no, that's okay, because if there is a failure, we're liable, knowing that it was there, that we allow it to be built without a permit.
Yes, okay. Okay, and I just, I want to comment, I think that's a good point with the C-CANS, I think they're both open can worms, so people that have them, by having this conversation, but some, they're everywhere, but, you know, I think you're, you're right, that there are other structures, and this is probably just the beginning of what we might be going through for district responsibility.
If I may, I, well, I'm not positive, but I believe that you are allowing the C-CANS as long as they're not in the front yard, checking with something by law.
Second.
I, I, I think he's right, and I know that you're allowing C-CANS in construction, that's, I can double verify that as well, but anytime you have any construction progress, you're allowed to have a C-CAN. But once the construction is, is complete, you're supposed to remove the C-CAN, or, or if so, where it's not, you know, readily visible.
Okay, let's make it clear, if you're not sure, let's make it clear for everybody who's, same family, we understand what the bylaw for these structures are, temporary structures or whatever, we need to know, and the public needs to know, whether they use purchases as you can, because that's a good purchase for them, and they're storing their private property in these places, so, you know, we need for people to understand and do exactly what we're asking, okay? Good, Counselor Dent?
There was, there was some type of clause, we were going to put on the property, it's just across the highway, and there was a C-CAN, like, very old, but in section 57, because I'm not 100% sure, but there was an issue with the C-CAN, same thing, a resident reported it, and then the bylaw officer went out, and they were gonna force it to be removed, and the district was, and then we, as a council, decided, that was a little bit heavy handed at the time, and I believe, I think it was a section 57, I'm 100% sure of that.
Our government officer is pretty sure there was a section 57 as well. Something to kind of remember, as mayor council has always taken, was also being challenged that a lot of bylaw enforcement is, is through complaint. So, you know, one thing we hear is, is say somebody standing in an RV camper and so it's driving them. We generally don't go around knocking on RV doors and driveways to see if somebody's doing that. If we had a complaint about, you know, drug sales, or loud noises, or police companies, or something like that, then that, that bylaw gives us the enforcement tool to take care of it. A lot of our bylaws are, are driven by complaint. So, you know, if it's quite possible that if a person has a C-CAN in the backyard and it didn't bother anybody, and we're not driving around looking at people's back fences, you know, so that's something we can always change, if mayor council wants to be more, you know, enforcement-based. But in general, we don't go looking to bother people when they're probably hungry. C-CANS are affordable, solid, and a lot of people use them for storage. But I can find out for sure that that's our group.
So is there, is there any financial burden to the owner of the building here, to have this section 57 for?
At the moment, there's no financial burden, it's just that if they go to sell the property, the potential buyer or lending officials, they look at the title, and if there's no sign, it's stated there, it's a structure that's not permanent.
Thank you.
Counselor?
Sorry, just one more to make sure I understand. So essentially, we are only recommending this because, to remove legal liability, because most people that are going through a structure would think that common sense it is safe in case of snow or whatever, if there was an injury, we're just literally removing ourselves from liability. Is that correct? Not saying that the people who are building it don't have the skill, or we don't trust them, it's just the legal right that we're setting, is that correct?
Absolutely, all it is, is during the building process, that's what part of the Devon inspects, the building inspector inspects the different phases of the construction process. So if there's wiring, is it up to code, plumbing, the building structure itself, is a building engineer, is it built for snow, that kind of thing. So all this does is, if the owner wishes to sell the property, then, then it comes up on the titles saying that there's a structure on this property that has not been inspected, and we're not taking any liability for it. If, you know, it could be found, I don't know, I haven't seen it, I haven't been in it, but we don't know, so we can't assume liability for it, and that's the reason for the bylaw.
Okay, and then, I guess that would be just up to the, if there was a potential buyer down the road, they wouldn't be able to assess whether they wanted to have that permit at that time, or if they look at it and they have their own inspector or whatever, do you think they're gonna just look forward from there, is that correct?
The, the section 57 will stay on that property forever, or you can apply for a section 58, and have it removed, have the section 57 removed. In order for that to be approved, the, the structure would have to be removed from the property, or have an engineer completed on it to prove that it meets the BC building code requirements for their, for this area.
Okay, two more questions. What would it cost for section 58 approximately?
For the move, or for an engineer to?
Uh, no, that's another question. So, like, just to have, like, I get that they would have to have an inspector of their choice come over and do that, as long as it means our requirements, correct? And, but how much would it cost for them to do the fish?
Yeah, there'd be a cost.
Is there a monetary fee of $100 or $40 or something?
We usually just pay it.
Yeah, no, it's paid through the district, or paid to.
Okay, so it's, it's free, and I'm assuming, like, you were called out by, by a community member, but they could use anybody they wanted as an inspector at any point to do that, is that correct?
To?
Or to prove that it is, it meets the standards?
It has to be done by a professional structural engineer.
Of their choice.
Of their choice, yes.
Okay. I think that's all the questions, thanks.
And it still has to be approved by the only staff. Once engineer has done the policy, then goes through, goes through the steps of, and definitely it does is that you take down the structure, unless they live in 50, then you pass it against structure law.
One more question. Is there a cost for you to do the inspection?
No, if there was permit issued, there's a permit fee required, but there's no individual inspection fees.
So if the owner wanted to, they could let you go into the property, inspect it, ensure it's safe at zero cost?
No, there had, would have to be a building permit, absolutely, in place before I could do any inspections. After the fact, I don't do building inspections after a structure is rebuilt.
Where it's at now, I don't know if it's completed, but where it's at now, would it be safe for you to do?
Is it possible, if there's an application, with the information required to prove that it meets the, the building code requirements? If it's not completed totally on the inside, there could be an inspection done after a purpose in place, if the building meets the building code requirements.
Okay, and then I guess my last question is, has there been any communication between the owner and the district in order to try and reach this, to find a compromise?
We have done some communication, but there, there kind of really isn't a compromise at this point. It has to be, it has to be shown that it is, that it will withhold, withstand the snow load, it has to be engineered to a standard.
Okay, and that's because we're bound by expectation, like, legal expectation? Okay.
If we didn't do this, then if they, if they sold, and if it fell on somebody, then we have the liability for it.
Yeah.
And I'm not saying it would, but we have to cover ourselves, if it has a structural engineering standard, then it's okay.
Thank you.
And the bottom line is safety, we're here at these things, these things can, can be bought because of safety. But then, they would just come looking, as we, oh, yeah, so we're pulling, then, then they give us spot, we, we start off at safety, and any look, anywhere before, it's certainly because safety factors start right at the beginning, so that's where these are all done. But as for 57, I mean, that's, there's no shade, that's getting engineered, that's perfect, yeah, done.
The building bylaw specifies that all structures need BC building code, so that's throughout all the provinces, it all can, you have certain standards that need, I mean, you see multiple, I had one time, multiple tarp structures, coveralls, collapse on carbon structure, some of them are built for the snow loads, but multiple buildings that you buy off the shelf, don't have any engineering to it all. I don't know exactly this one, there's nothing to submit, so.
Good, yes, done.
We also have one other issue with it, that's just kind of, we've just realized, basically, is that it's subdivided lot, now it has an ancillary structure on it, and you're really not supposed to enter a bylaw and build an ancillary structure before you build a home. So there's, there's all kinds of layers within it that, that we're just starting to understand as well.
Your zoning bylaw has the primary use of single-family dwelling or duplex dwelling, your accessory buildings are accessory to the primaries, so this one is a subdivided lot with no single-family dwellings, so it's an illegal structure per the zoning bylaws now.
You have two parts, you, there are two parts. Counselor Russell, if, could he, go ahead.
Okay, just quickly, because I'm always seeking solutions, I really don't love the section 57 for anybody, could this, will they just be taken down as, as an away from all of this at this moment?
Yes.
All right. All right, thank you. Can you move all those in there? Okay. Okay, all right, two. MIA purchase letter of support.
Good question. I'll make that recommendation that council will approve, drop letters of support for the MIA ventures. Res zoning parcels consisting of eight point three six eight, located on Pizer Regional District, approximately eight kilometers west of Chetlin, and six oh eight seven and six one oh one malls, rural residential, to light industrial.
A second, but I have a question.
Yeah, please go.
Okay. Sorry, do we know what is gonna go on there?
Like, do we own that as a district? Because if we're dealing with a piece of a regional district, I mean, I think we're stepping up our, our limits.
No, it's all good, it's easy to misunderstand, this is part of the public consultation process. It's already on the Pizer Regional District webpage, and it's going through them for the rezoning. But the owner has requested a letter of support from us, saying that we don't have any issues with the rezoning. It'll be used as a pipe lay-down yard. It was, the majority of it was a gravel pit at one time, so it's kind of a similar use. The proponent has the approval of the owners of the property adjacent to it on one side, and they own, the proponent owns the other side. So there's not a problem with the neighbors, it's not a, it's not a problem with pretty much anybody. But the regional district suggested to them that the more letters of support they receive, the better off the project would look. And because, you know, it's a local business person that employs them and everything, I thought it worthwhile to bring forward to council.
Thanks.
Is the property owner here, in the street?
No, he's still, I'm assuming.
Okay. Any more discussion?
I want to find out that if you had to provide, or basically see that the residence is in fact already being removed and is completely leveled and ready to go, so I'm always excited for development, so I wish that we did have more understanding, that what it tells me is that we've got some big business coming, and that's always good news for our community.
Do you know the section? Yeah, do you want to? Okay.
No, we're good.
Okay. Okay. All those in there? Okay. Want to report, okay, we will continue with new business. Uh, okay, councilor, yeah.
Is there, been any further progress with the complaint following the business owner in the yards to the farmer's market?
Over there.
Oh, sorry, has there been any more progress, and does anybody have a chance to go out and talk to him more? Is he satisfied?
Well, yes, I did go out and talk to him, and no, he's not really satisfied, that he doesn't feel that it's a fair impact to his business. He did ask, one of the signs was inaccurate, and we've changed that as soon as we heard about it. We've got traffic control in as much as we can, so we're working on it as much as we can. I don't think he would be satisfied with anything other than with the removal of the farmer's market. And the problem with that is, like, with my discussion with him was, you have to have, you have to have, like, water and toilet facilities and power. We have carbon swirl set up for that kind of installation, it's where we have little events like that. And so it's not something where we can just move farmer's market. We've tried it in other locations, it didn't work very well, and this is kind of the best paying for it, so to speak.
Have you seen, and also?
I'm just wondering what the complaint was.
Well, the business owner feels like it blocks traffic to his business, so that he, there's not, like, there, he's had farmer's market customers parking his parking in front of his business, and so he feels like it's an impact to his business.
Okay.
Could we not shuffle the farmer's market a little bit further down? Because it is my understanding that the particular access into that little strip mall, if you will, is being blocked. But if it was just moved further towards a W direction? Because that ended, so we're blocking off that entire portion, but that, the far end is not really being utilized. So if everything's moved down a bit in the signage, and there's still access into that strip mall, that might solve a lot of problems, just simply by moving everybody thirty-five feet, just a thought.
We had tried at one point a little bit further over, and we were having some issues with between pedestrian and vehicle safety. That's one of the reasons Ellen's put in traffic control. We are still letting people in to park at his business. It's, it's just, we kind of restrict it as much as we can. And again, I would point out that even, even if the street was totally blocked off for any kind of event, you know, there's ample parking and block on either side, it's a very short block. And most places, you know, if you, if really, you know, if you have to walk a block, it's not considered that big of a deal, like Vancouver, Edmonton, or even Dawson Creek before St. John. It's, uh, we've looked at things, we're continuing to look at things, Ellen and I discussed this at length last week. We'll try as many things that we can think of, but we're trying to meet a lot of different needs here. And it is, you know, it's, it's for a couple of hours one day, it's not a long-term impact.
So you're saying that the district is offering traffic control for farmer's market?
The visitor information staff, the downline reform, to help set up and put the cones on the logs to ensure that there is no parking happening in that section, and trying to help them set up and move so that there is a flow. The biggest point I have to state is that it's the safety of the pedestrians as well in that place, because we have tried with the traffic open, but it was really hard with the kids, and if you have children on it, accessibility. But I can definitely take your idea and reveal that, to see if there could be a shuffle again with them on the other side. If you want closer to the river house, maybe that's an option, and it opens a whole other side. We can take a look at that, it's just the access to the bathroom and, you know, maybe even that, I can take a look. Thank you.
Good, thank you, Chris.
And sorry, because I am, you know, I've been here five years, and I've figured out exactly what time this fellow's business closes on that day, and when the farmer's market starts, I have a few questions. Do we know?
It's about three-thirty when it started, when it starts setting up.
Three o'clock.
Three o'clock, so until six, and I think he's open until five or so.
Okay, so like two hours. Okay. And how long have we been doing farmer's markets here in town? How many years?
The farmer's market, it's all been active for quite some time, but they were at the seniors facility, and it wasn't very busy there, then they moved to Spirit Park, or behind, it wasn't very visual. So they were trying to get more access, and so then they moved and suggested carbon swirl, as a more central. But I don't know how long for sure. I can get a look back on that, but I know we really worked with them to try and resolve the situation, because food security and access and other options for our community.
Yeah, I have no doubt of that. And I think carbon swirl is a great place to display what we do with the garden in general. I'm just curious about how long it's been in that area that this fellow or business owner has disturbed? How, has this been going on for years, or is it just a new thing? And a follow-up, do we know if he's saying that he's moving seven hundred dollars?
I think it's all about, maybe, a couple places have come from several different businesses along that way. One was when the river house, it has their deliveries on how the trucks are coming in and out. So we changed that to be able to move in, so that they actually changed the truck delivery to go and make sure the truck came in before the three clock timelines. And then the three businesses, or three businesses that were in there, and then the new one was not open all the time at the beginning, it's what it is now. So the impact to that whole section, we hear mostly, so we tried to, that's why we added the traffic control, the signage, the access, so it's not, it's that complex.
Okay, and having all those people in that area at that time has not helped their businesses? Would people seeing that they're there be coming along with it? We don't know that.
Well, and that's kind of the practice of the thing is, there are communities where they ask for our, our to be in front of them because it brings some people who would normally not be there. So every time the farmer's market is open, it brings a couple hundred people there. So I, I don't know, I mean, I would think that that would be a beneficial thing for small business to get, you know, it's free advertising. He doesn't feel that it's, that the advertising is even going to the loss of revenue, but he doesn't really have, have data to support that, so it's, you know, and it, I don't know, it's a bit, it's a bit.
And I wonder, have we had much communication with him where we could discuss, like, where we need, I don't know what the term is, advertise, or show gratefulness that we are already there, you know? Or bring, like, ask our community members that are at the farmer's market to potentially, it's maybe businesses that are there that are allowing us to be there, so to promote supporting their businesses, would that not be given something we could consider or want to go?
Well, that was one of the conversations I did have with him, and we do have big signs that we made that say, you know, these businesses are open. He had a problem, the one sign for his said, "Open by appointment", because when we built the sign, his business wasn't open for regular operating hours, he was only open by appointment. As soon as he pointed out that it wasn't by appointment anymore, we changed the sign. We changed it that day, actually, it was immediate. But we do try to promote the business. I talked to him about maybe putting out, you know, a farmer's market specials, you know, in front of a store, a sign on it, that kind of thing. But he's not really in a, in a mind frame to want to compromise.
Okay, so then, I think, what do you think about making a community map to see what businesses actually want that kind of foot traffic outside their business, where people could enjoy other stores, community, and engage more with the businesses? And even if it means moving it, maybe we should see what businesses would be interested in having that kind of foot traffic outside their business.
Well, see, that's where we get to the other rub, is that you still have to have the health back component, so you have to have the power, the toilets, running water, and all this other stuff. And so it becomes really problematic where you can put it. We talked about the vacant lot by Orchids and Moonlight, and we don't have the infrastructure there, it would be expensive. We've built the infrastructure, carbon's rope, for these kinds of events, to showcase small events. So we have community barbecues, farmer's markets, the Autumn Fest, that kind of thing, where there's really good visibility. As soon as you take it off of the highway, then you lose visibility, and the farmer's market loses revenue. So we talked about behind the rec center, but again, no visibility. Spirit Park, they took her up because there was no visibility. So we're trying to meet, you know, like Ellen says about the local food security and shopping locals, sporting local, this is all part of what a farmer's market offers, and we're trying to meet a lot of different needs. And unfortunately, it's one of those cases where we're, you know, somebody's always going to be unhappy with us, I think.
Yes, that's true. Yeah, I still think maybe it might be worth considering, if you just sort of, throw the, a big deal, if there was a business in town, or businesses that would be interested in doing that, that could meet those criterias, maybe, like, it might be a more permanent, peaceful, long-term solution, but.
We're always looking, we're always exploring options, we're always listening to.
Okay, thank you.
More discussions on that, farmers, and the last line of details for food is farmers. Here we are, not that except in the fire, it's on the front door, I just can't imagine that. Anyway, if that's it.
Councilor Deck had one more new business thing?
Yeah, go ahead.
One more new business. The other new business was, there's a continuous, in time we did have a painting of the bar, the main was a lot of sediment coming off the backside, going to the park, over in front of the, in front of the fire pole and behind the building. There was, I was asked if I could see if that can be addressed, or look at, or just to see if there's any mitigation we can do for sediment coming in from the right back here, or getting built around.
And which places are being impacted?
The back end, in front of the fire pole, and then behind the red light pole.
Well, we.
It's quite, I want to look at it at the end of the day, how the rain, it's quite a good set down.
And we do, we clean it up regularly through public works as it becomes a problem, and as we move forward, hopefully through the, the finishing off that lot. That's one of the main issues we've looked at, is drainage, and making it so it doesn't, you know, there's no issues with the slope, it's a bad slope for that. We are figuring out a workaround on it, but right now it is a big pile of dirt, and we're gonna get some sediment, but we'll try, I'll talk to engineering about cleaning up a little bit more proactively after rain events.
Any other questions on the, your software, about Councilor Deck's software? Okay, so we're gonna have a look at that. Okay, good night. Okay, at this time, I would like to invite the public for questions for anything on and agenda that we have discussed today. If you have any new questions.
Steve Haller, five three one nine, what do you have to say? So, I just want to clarify on the liability factor for you guys, for my ability. So how are you liable for any of my property?
We're only liable if you sold the property, that's all the section fifty-seven asks, is if you sell it, it comes up on the title search through the bank when you go to purchase it, that there's a section fifty-seven.
Okay, so there's no worry of you being liable for the structure there afterwards? So just to clarify, because you guys keep going around liability, which you're not here, why would somebody buy it? Well, if they're buying it, then they own it, right? And you're such a good seller. I was also gonna ask about the ten shade, so why don't we build the ten shade, that signs on that thing? According to Benham, it doesn't have to be thrown, because he literally said, he sees them blocking all over the place. So is my structure less or more burdened than a ten shade, you know? Because everyone who's ten shad, like Mayor has one in his yard, it's over a hundred, right? A hundred, right? So technically, she was getting it over, right? So there's no, for a temporary structure, you only have to do it, have snow load, if it's a structurally aligned, but not a ten shade. So if you're worried about the liability, which is, you're not really, right? I just was wondering about, like, should I have the ten shade? Because I had a ten shade before and it fell in, so that's why I went this route this time. I obviously realized you guys didn't do this, so I didn't go asking for it. And that was just more or less what I was wondering, like, would the ten shade, would it not be an option? Then I would be pretty clear, like, did I take that down and put a ten shade up?
Well, the short answer is kind of yes and no. Under the bylaw, we don't require a building permit for a TARP-type structure, so read no sort of ten shade. But it would still be an ancillary structure on a lot before a home. So as I understand, Devin?
Yeah, I agree with that. The section fifty-seven would not have to do with that.
No, but even if you ask if it was a better option to do a local coverall, it would, you know, would be if it was on your lot where your house is. But because you're subdivided, and then you'd be building an ancillary structure of any time before there is a residence on it. And because it's zoned for residential, then that kind of defeats the purpose as well. It's, yeah, it's a strange situation, I'm not gonna lie, but it's, like I tell people, if you look back on pictures of like the eighteen eighties, when they had chanting towns, and they built out of anything, and then they burned out or fall down, and that's why we have building codes, basically. And so we have to follow the process, because if you sell, then we're liable. If you don't sell, it's your business, and we're not gonna bother you.
But you're liable for what? There's only one.
If somebody buys it, and they're, and. If somebody buys it, and they're, and we're aware that it's not a permanent structure, and it's not a, an engineered or approved structure, then we assume the responsibility for it, even though it's yours. Because we're, we're, our job is to make sure that people follow the building code and bylaws. So we have to make sure that, that those processes are followed, or we have to let people know that they weren't. And in this case, all we do is we put it on the title that, that there is, there's, there's a problem. If, if, if I could put it in like a personal injunction, I have a house in Taylor that won't sell, for various reasons, but it has an encroachment, the carport is too close to the neighbor, and when I bought it, I was not finding the encroachment, and I never went ahead and purchased it anywhere. It's the same thing with 57.
Yeah.
And it would be, the purchaser would just have to know that there's a structure out here that's deemed illegal because it hasn't been inspected and it's not engineered.
Here, there's more liable to let them know, you're not really liable if something falls in on it, because they buy it, they know.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, once we let them know that it wasn't engineered and approved and inspected, then it's their problem. If we don't let them know and we know about it, then it's our problem. And, and what happened is, is somebody phoned and said, "There's a structure going up, but we don't think it's inspected." So we, by that point, we have to look into it. And we do, we probably do with section 57, probably since I've been here about one or two years, because, what we didn't do. Okay.
Probably done, it's a solid one.
So probably less than one year, but there is.
So now that's section 57, you're in low location.
Pardon me?
So now that's section 57, you're in low location. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question about that? Are there any questions?
No, this is a public. Okay. If there is any other questions on the agenda, if you may, please.
Place your shirt, or a light on the rain, or you start with that. Okay, so I'm just trying to wrap my head around this. So anything under 10 years' swear, you don't need a permit. Is that correct? No permit. But you need a permit if it's over that, but you don't need a permit if it's a ten shed? Is that correct?
Bylaws that is plastic all the way up to the, have a structure.
Does not need a permit?
It's not.
Okay, so you can have this giant ten shed that could collapse on, on someone, and they do collapse on people, as the building inspector said. They collapse on people, but we're worried about what looks like a pretty, structurally sound. I've looked at the pictures, and I think it was a little way to say you're in a ten shed. So is there not something wrong with this bylaw? The ten sheds are more of a liability than a structurally sound building versus this tension, versus a tension? So, you don't, you don't think that a ten shed poses a risk when they collapse on someone?
Well, give your thoughts about, I mean, the, the laws are in there for reasons, right?
Yeah.
You're staying on, you're staying on the.
The law doesn't, the law doesn't make sense because ten sheds are very likely to collapse. The building inspector said that, they collapse all the time. So, and on top of that, why do you think the district is liable? Why not put something in bylaws that states, "The District of Chapman is not liable for anything I collapsed on someone's property." Would that solve the issue? The mayor not totally open to, we got the bylaws?
We can oversee, oversee some of the, some of the laws that BC and Canada. We, we, we're not, we're not in that position.
So who creates the bylaw? Who creates the building bylaw?
It's that or BC, and we abide by that.
Okay, how extensive we find the people that do the bylaws, are you just, we don't buy as not a liability?
It's in there, we abide by it.
Okay, but it doesn't make sense, should the bylaw be, maybe relooked at?
Did she hear a little more about that?
It's a provincial building code, so.
But it doesn't make sense.
Well, there's a lot of things in life that may not make sense, but it's, it's the provincial bylaw. It's, it's a provincial legislation on building codes.
But it doesn't make sense. Something that is more dangerous, a ten shed is more dangerous.
I'm attempting to answer your question, so, if you have a ten shed, that becomes your problem, because it's a ten shed that you're dealing with.
Yes.
If it collapses during that, that's quite a lot.
But all of them?
But it's, you're looking at, again, provincial versus local. We do not, we do not have the power in the government act, the charter of, community charter, or the local government act, to, to overrule provincial or federal laws.
Who breaks this? Building bylaw?
Well, the building bylaw is written into the code, the provincial building code. So we follow best practice.
So do you guys consult anyone from the province to actually create bylaws, which the District of Chapman, that makes sense?
No, we, we, you don't understand, we, we follow the provincial law, we, we hire experts to advise us through it, we hire, we like, we, we, we don't just randomly make these things up. These are all part of best practices. You'll find exactly the same bylaws are pretty much, pretty close in every community in the province of British Columbia. You can, you can feel free to lobby the provincial government and ask for changes if you think it's unfair, or if you think it doesn't make sense. But we can't supersede the province, we can't supersede the feds. We're a local government, we have our scope of influence and our scope.
So who raises those three codes, because of the polyethylene?
That's part of the provincial building code.
And you guys have no advocacy at local level to advocate to the provincial government, but bring us in the fire, 3,000 square feet long, and don't need snow load, aren't liable?
Well, we haven't had an issue up to now, so we had no reason to lobby them. We lobby the province all the time about changes. If enough local governments get together and agree on it, then we can make positive change. But as it stands, again, we're looking at a provincial legislative building code. And, and you'll find it's pretty much the same everywhere you go, and it's probably it's pretty close to the same province to province.
Okay, and then the other part that I, I see a huge gap in this entire system is the fact that it's complaint driven. So how, how does, you just wait for someone to complain, but if you have a structure that isn't a code, that is a liability, if something happens, does that not leave you guys liable?
No, because it's, again, it's once itself, if we're aware of it, we have to deal with it. If we're not aware of it, it's, it's the homeowner's responsibility. It's, it's all about, about taking responsibility when you know about something. So, we can be like a really active bylaw enforcement community. That means we hire our bylaws, bylaw officers, we raise our taxes, and then we go, we bang on doors and we ask if somebody's staying in their RV and driving.
Should we bear some of that?
Well, it's, see, this is what I mean, is under the bylaw, you're not supposed to live in an RV, but we know if somebody's, suddenly comes home to work on a shutdown, they might stay among dad's RV, but we're not going to knock on the door as long as there're not, there's not excessive complaints or issues.
So you guys are more attentionist?
What, no, no, that's, that's rude.
We're getting off topic here on one question. So if you have an issue with our bylaw, and what we are doing, I think you have to apply to the DC regulators and making sure that you understand the bylaws that we have to run abide by. So with that, I'll give you one more question, and that's it. We're going to, please for this question.
Okay, so Mayor and Council, you're saying that you can't create a motion to add that to your bylaws? That's what you just said?
Yes. Thank you very much. If there's any other questions on what happened, what the agenda is today. We've discussed bylaw, the section 57 already. If you got some other stuff, that'd be great, if you think you're ready.
Rebecca Haller, 531745A series. So my question is in regards to RV wiring, and I just have a couple questions this week. So if December is starting, the property, 531745A series, the property and the council just ordered 7757, is there a liability to the DOC? I would like to ask the mayor and every council member, as well as the wind, what staff, and then wait for complaints to be filed, and which will be liable to the district?
Yeah, sorry.
I believe we went all, went over the story about liability, we were not liable for when we do 57s, right? We've heard all that.
I'm just, I'm just wondering if liability to the District of Chapman, if it's really concerned about liability, why do we wait for complaints instead of bringing people in compliance through, like, information and that?
Well, we don't see everything, but, you know, we all go around like our staff said, we don't, you got, but if that's the case, where people are building 10 or whatever, it can be.
Yeah, my laws and general.
But we've already done this.
Okay.
We've already done this. Don't you got anything else on what part of the agenda?
Totally. Just wondering, the District of Chapman picks and chooses what they're going for, they come for their bylaws, but it doesn't depend on compliance, so how do we choose when it comes in?
It is a fraction. There's still, it, it's just, it's just whatever.
I'm just trying to defer the process. So if I, I would have to call, you would, a concern, correct? Then every single time it's on call, is he going forward with it?
I don't believe so, not, not even, we won't let me out.
Okay, so how, so now?
I'd have to get staff and.
Okay. So how do you choose, sorry?
There's, there's several different layers again here. If we witness something, like if, if somebody starts building something and we're driving by and we notice it, then we investigate. If we get a complaint, we investigate. So there's a whole process where we get, people might come in with, with a concern, it could be a structure, it could be unsighted premises, it can be all kinds of things. We don't necessarily enforce. Unsighted premises are a perfect example. We can have.
Unsightly, yeah, so it's like.
Unsightly premises. Like, we have a lot of, of equipment operators, we have a lot of truck drivers in the community. They all have older machinery and, and say a lot, or, or steel, or any number of things that somebody might find unsighted. When we hear a complaint about it, we'll take a look at it, it will go, well, you know, like, like he, this is part of his, his livelihood, and we're not going to bother. But there, at the same time, if there's something that says, poses a public health hazard, then, then we'll enforce it. If Devon is driving around and he sees a structure going up, or, or sees something happening that, that can, does not conform to our bylaw or to the building code, then we'll investigate and we'll move on.
So that's unsightly and not dangerous, so that's not unsightly in this level?
Okay, we've, we've gone off topic, it's not on our agenda, we want to pick and choose, so.
No, I'm just, I'm just trying to get clarity, so I don't know, let me know how the process goes.
And that being clear, that has to be on our agenda that we, or do today, that's our statement.
Okay, so. I'm just talking, like, I would dislike clarity.
Do you experience one more, one more question?
So if Mr. Reclay knows this, we're in council, must know, right, started with the bylaws, correct? Do you know the information that he was sharing with me, like, do you know unsightly as opposed to dangerous? Like for the rains? Bonnie, Blair?
I'll let you know that I received a letter for, from my little property in town for the grass being too long, because my darling tenant didn't bother to mow it, probably all summer, and councillor herself got a, a letter of infraction, so it's, bylaws are being, what you're being, people are getting notified.
I'm just wondering, like, someone made a complaint about your lawn, and?
I'm not sure if it was a complaint, or if bylaws simply went by, but most certainly there's a process and people are paying attention. It's not pinpointed at.
Right, so one last question. If it's really about liability, I have one last question. Do you know that there's pools in town?
Do I know that there's which?
Pools, outdoor pools in town.
There's temporary pools that you buy Canadian Tire, they're not, and I'm an ex-pool operator, they're not covered under legislation, under the pool operators.
You know the bylaws of overcorps in Derby?
Well, if you know of one, let us know, we'll investigate.
Okay, well, that, that's, yeah, thank you. Okay, reconvene, we go convene to, recess to a conference meeting? Make that motion?
Motion to.
Resess.
Resess.
Only second?
Second.
Call them, okay. Thank you.
Let's start off with, I guess, the, the vision that you guys saw by the time you were in council, seven years ago with this building. What was the vision of this building back then?
So back then, the vision was based on the elders and people in community who fantasized about having a building where we could all gather, a big enough space to accommodate everyone and more people, so that we could house bigger events and bring more people together, because the current gym that we have is too small, and because we're growing in population, we needed to expand.
What was it like when you guys decided that, you know, you were going to go ahead and do it? Was there excitement? Were people nervous? What was that journey like?
So when the organization came together to talk about the idea becoming a reality, there was a lot of unknowns. Where is the money going to come from? How are we going to fund it? So before the excitement, there was worry and stress, and there was a lot of unanswered questions to make the idea a little uneasy, but over time, the questions started to get answers, and then the funding came, and then that's when the excitement came, because now we have a way to navigate to the project.
What would you say was one of the more challenging aspects of building this, making this project a reality?
So the, the biggest challenge of all, of course, is the budget, because you can plan so much, but then there's always something thrown into the mix where it was unexpected. So then you have to accommodate, you know, the budget, and figure out, how do you navigate this cost that we didn't foresee? And so it really did come down to how to manage the money, and we had a good enough contingency that all the outside things that we didn't expect and plan for, it, it worked out in the end. It all just fell into place, and things happened, and we're grateful for that.
Can you give us a, do you know numbers by any chance, just roughly like total cost of project, and how long did it take to build?
So, the bill took three years, two, three years, and the, the funding came from two different pots, three different pots. So in total, around 27 million. Can't give an exact number right off the top of my head, but we had enormous help from the federal and provincial governments, and then the nation kicked in some of our dollars to make it all work out.
And when you look at the building here today, what does the building make you feel when you look at it?
Connection. It's all about connection. It makes me feel so happy that we have a place to connect, because that's what this building is all about, is so we can bring people in, we can share, we can eat food together, discuss different things, and connect. You know, same with Pembican Days, that's a place to share, to eat together, to have fun, but to connect. And I think this space is going to provide that on so many different levels.
Do you have any special areas of the building that are maybe in your heart, a bit of your favorite, or anything that sticks out to you?
I do have a favorite room. It's the music room, because you can make magic in a mu, a music room. We have a lot of musicians in community, and I think that's a great space to encourage and develop the talent. And so if people want to record, that's an option, they can do that, because that's what the music room does. And, you know, I think that's a wonderful element to have in the building, is to be able to have a music program, teach people how to write a song, we have a stage now where they could perform. Like, I think that kind of entertainment is really uplifting, and that adds a whole element of fun. So, I think. So I think that's my favorite.
And anything else that you would like to add or maybe we missed in this conversation?
Anything to add?
Yeah, anything else you'd like to add?
Um, I'm just looking forward to the future and I'm so excited that all the teams got together to make this happen. And I'm so thrilled, you know, the turnout that we had today. And I'm just really grateful and full of like happy emotions because today is the day that we were waiting for for years. Like, when the idea came around seven years ago and started discussing how are we going to do this? Back then it was a dream and now it's reality. So I'm thrilled. It's exciting.